Okay, I'm good Kathy.
Good morning. I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Board of Supervisors. It's Thursday, July 5th, 2018. It's 8:30 a.m. and we're in the community center in the Sierra Room at 8:51 East Williams Street. Sue, will you call?
Good morning Supervisor Bonkowski, Supervisor Bagwell, Supervisor Barrett, Mayor Crowell, and Mayor Protam about.
I know it's out of the norm. Do we have anyone here from the Airport Road Church to lead us in the invocation today? Is Bruce here? I don't see him, then I will.
Good morning. I'm Sharon Ross with Capital City Arts Initiative and here to introduce your new exhibition. This is Jenny Raven, The Creative Growth Years. This is a companion show to the show we have over in the courthouse which is Visual Oasis. All this work is done by people that have pretty intense disabilities and work with Creative Growth Art Center down in Oakland. The essay and the wall text in the back both explain a great deal about the art center. People go there, they have like 150 clients, people with disabilities, and up to 75 professional artists every week that go in and work with them. So they've made some pretty amazing artwork. Jenny is deceased. She lived until 1984. She had a brain tumor and after the surgery, her short-term memory was gone. But she made some pretty amazing artwork. Jenny's mother Nancy Raven lives in Minden and we had the Creative Growth Arts Show scheduled and then discovered that she had a lot of Jenny's work. So this is a companion show and I think you can see a pretty big range of work that she did. So we're thrilled to have the work. I hope you get over to the courthouse and see that exhibition. And I think the work really demonstrates that even if people have severe limitations, they can still make some pretty wonderful contributions to our culture. The essay writers will be up here in September 19th and doing one of our Nevada neighbors' talks about this whole project. We're going to be hanging, the high school show over at The Brick is up and we're taking it down Monday and going to hang a show by art from UNR artists. And the last thing is thank you very much for the support for the Cultural Commission and the grants and support for CCAI. Most appreciated.
Sharon, thank you for what you do. Really appreciate it.
Thanks.
Is there any other public comment? Linda?
My name is Linda Maroney and I'm with the Third and Curry Street Farmers Market. We had three things this week that happened with the market. Farmers Market Coalition is a national organization across the United States and the Third and Curry Street Farmers Market was picked of one of the 10 featured markets in National Farmers Market Week. And that is a really big deal because only 10 were picked and we're right alongside the ferry building Farmers Market. One of the things you had to do was write an essay and you had to pick one thing that you thought made your market special. And from going to everything that I go in the farmers markets, the thing that makes, one of the things that makes our market special is the support we receive from the city through the Office of Business Development, through Park and Rec, through streets, and through the Sheriff's Office. And so that's one of the things that were featured in this article. Then the next thing that happened yesterday, there is a website that says everything in your state, only in your state, Nevada. And the Farmers Market was featured as an awesome Farmers Market in the state. And she's based out of Vegas. So the front picture there was the 32nd Street Southwest Navy Band that played two weeks ago. And they played on Tuesday night, but they contacted me and they wanted to play one hour at the market. So we set them up in McFadden Plaza. We arranged for them to change their clothes before they came on because they were coming to Reno. So the Fox let them come in the back door and open up early, change their clothes there. Then afterwards, the market bought them lunch. And Colin said they'd been here a whole week, that there was not one hitch when they came to Carson City. Everything went smooth and in all the meals they had eaten in the whole week, that that was the best meal they had. And then the last thing that happened last, this Tuesday, it's called Las Vegas Double Food Bucks. They're a nonprofit organization. They reached out to our market. They have a $200,000 grant and they want to help fund our SNAP program. Now, we've been doing a double SNAP program with Partnership Carson City. We partner with them. We've already been doing it. This is our third year. But we have limited funds that we raise from some very nice people at the market that give us money and through partnership. And we have about 4,000. But because we've already been doing it and we're already set up, they want to give us additional funding. So this is just a great thing because it won't limit us to $2,000. We can do a little more advertising and she's not limited. So she wants to spend all her grant money and she wants our market to help her spend it. So these are three things that just are wonderful things for Carson City and for the market. And I'm so thankful that the city had the foresight to start the market back in 2008 when it really wasn't the greatest financial thing going and before all the downtown redevelopment was there. And now to keep it going. So thank you everybody who got the ship and put all the people in it and helping me steer it forward. So thank you.
Linda, thank you. And it's your energy and dedication to this that has made it such a huge success. So thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Okay. Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes of June 7th and June 19th? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the minutes of the Carson City Board of Supervisors for June 7th, 2018, as presented.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. And the second set of minutes.
I move to approve the minutes of the Carson City Board of Supervisors for June 19th, as presented.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Thank you. City manager or deputy city manager, are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
Then we will accept the agenda as presented. Are there anything, is there anything that needs to be pulled from the consent agenda? I'm under the understanding that 8B and C need to be pulled. Is there anything else? All right. With that, do we have a motion on the consent agenda with the exception of those items?
I move to approve the consent agenda consisting of items 8A and 9A.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Thank you. All right. I guess we will take up item 8B at this point in time. Okay.
NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from voting when I have a disqualifying conflict. In my private commitment, I am a partner in the real estate brokerage firm, NAI Alliance Carson City. In that capacity, I am also the employer of the Chair of the Application Review Work Group tasked with ranking and evaluating the proposed project applications for funding purposes. Although I have never discussed with my employee her actions with the work group or what their recommendations were, I feel that this matter may be affected by my employer-employee relationship and therefore constitutes a disqualifying conflict. Therefore, I will not vote on this matter.
All right. So Anna, are you going to take us through this issue?
Anna Jimenez, Grants Administrator, sorry I wasn't prepared.
Yeah, I think this is the tax levy one. So this is the same rates that we presented to you in the budget. We're just charging them now.
It's AB.
Oh, this is yours.
Yeah, it's for the resolution to approve the, sorry. Yeah, this is just the resolution. You've already approved the allocations.
Is there any public comment on this issue or any board comment? Otherwise, I think we're looking 21.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2018-R21, a resolution authorizing expenditures of funds to nonprofit organizations for fiscal year 2019.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. And one abstention. It's a little tardy today. Just so you know, the voting thing is not coming up on the screen.
It is online.
Okay. All right. All right, I'll just keep moving forward.
It's that chair.
I think that's what it is. I think that's what it is. All right. Onto item number 8C. Sherri?
Yes, pardon me. This is the one I was talking about. So this is the levy of the taxes that we presented to you at the budget. It's just a resolution so we can give it to the Department of Taxation.
Is there any board comment on this? Public comment? Then I will bring it back to the board for a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution 2018-R22, a resolution to levy Carson City fiscal year 2018-19 tax rates as certified by the Nevada Tax Commission.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Onto item number 11A. This is to approve and accept the 2018 Federal Aviation Administration Airport Improvement Grant. Steve, are you going to take us through this? Ken, are you going to take us through this? Okay.
Good morning. I'm working in without a net. Well, I did bring the net. I hope everybody had a nice holiday. It kind of feels like a Sunday to me. Thank you for having me here today. I'm here to discuss a Federal Aviation Administration grant for the taxiway rehab project that we have applied for with the FAA. The project is approximately $352,000 worth of rehab work to taxiways Alpha, Bravo, Charlie, Delta, and taxi lanes Echo and Foxtrot, as well as a portion of the access road. The FAA has informed the Carson City Airport Authority that it is processing a grant application on our behalf. And we have, as the Carson City Airport Authority, has voted on that at our last meeting on June 20th and has tentatively accepted, or tentatively approved Q and D construction to be a word of the contract. So we're here today to have the Board of Supervisors validate that and with a proposed motion to accept the 2018 Federal Aviation Improvement Grant for the approximate amount of $352,000 for the rehab of those taxiways previously stated, and then execute the documents necessary to accept those funds on behalf of the Airport Authority. There is a local match of $23,400 approximately that the Airport Authority does have budgeted to meet that requirement, to accept that grant.
Thank you. Any board comments or questions? Brad?
Ken, can you go over the bid?
Yes. We did have, we did go out to bid twice on this project. The first time, there were three bidders and we had a processing error in that bid where Atkins Engineering is our based, locally-based engineer for these projects for the Airport Authority. And in that, originally, there was a pre-bid construction meeting where there was a requirement for, listed in the bid documents, to have an A or B contractor's license in order to perform the work. But in the public, or the pre-bid meeting, they indicated that they could accept a lower level just for the work on the asphalt. That amendment didn't make it with the bid documents, so once they were opened, it wasn't certified by the three bidders. So the board voted on, I believe it was the May meeting, to throw out all those bids and to rebid the project. The second bid time we bid the project, there were two bidders, of which one was Maxwell Asphalt out of Salt Lake City and then Q and D out of Reno. And Maxwell, the second time around, was also the lowest bidder, but they had an incomplete bid once again. And so the board voted to accept the Q and D bid and to reject the Maxwell bid. Maxwell did file a protest in the form of an email. However, their protest was also defective. They didn't post the bond as required in the bid documents. So in order to complete this project within the construction season, the Airport Authority voted to approve the Q and D bid package and then bring it to the Board of Supervisors.
Any other board questions or comments? Any public comment on this issue? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the board.
I move to approve and accept the 2018 Federal Aviation Administration Airport Improvement Grant 3-32-0004-32 in the approximate amount of $352,000 for use in rehabilitation of taxiways A, B, C, and D, and taxi lanes E and F, and portions of the access road, and to execute such documents as may be necessary to receive the funds on behalf of the Airport Authority.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Onto item 12A. This is to adopt a resolution authorizing a one-year cessation of the Schultz Ranch Maintenance District Assessment for fiscal year 2018-2019. Jen, are you going to walk us through this one?
Yes, thank you Supervisor about board members. Just a brief overview. So we have a landscape maintenance district formed for the Schultz Ranch subdivision. It was a very progressive idea and something that the city hadn't done before. So, you know, the former Parks and Recreation Director Roger Mullendorf worked with staff and tried to help develop an ordinance that would enable, you know, maintenance costs to be covered as any improvements as far as community beautification areas, so common areas, parks, and a lot of drainage areas and trails were maintained. And then there was a sustainable funding source for that, which is really helpful because we don't have an assessment district like this anywhere else in the city and we solely rely on the general fund or our Quality of Life Funds, which is sometimes not enough to do what we need to do, as we know. So right now, there is, in the current LMD language, there's shared costs between the city and the residents to cover everything. There's not a lot of improvements that have been made out in Schultz Ranch in those kind of categories that we just talked about. The park is not yet constructed, which will be the majority of where the costs are incurred for maintenance. And right now, it's just some tiny little strips, a couple medians, really small areas that are very, not very impactful for maintenance. So it's not really what I think when they were planning that financial plan, what was really going to be financially needed for those, as the phases were come out. The park should be under construction anytime now and hopefully completed by this fall. So we'll really start to see next summer, those maintenance costs going up. But we have sufficient funds available to continue maintenance without having to assess the homeowners again. I just thought it was the right thing to do. Also, if you read the code, it has language that sort of implies that we will not collect more than is needed and there's all these sort of inferences of refunds. And to be thoughtful of our administrative staff and their time, not just in parks, but the assessors and the treasurer, and if we had to do refunds and then reassess, and it's a lot of paperwork. So we thought this would be sort of the best compromise is to just do a one-year-only cessation of the tax. And then we would reinstate the year three costs as in the financial plan after the park is built.
Thank you Jen. I appreciate that. Is there any board comment? Brad?
So we actually worked on this with staff for, it was like eight or 10 months to put together the language for this. And I can tell you, you know, we probably did a dozen drafts between us and the attorney, Elizabeth Fielder for the developer. And it was never the intent on the Landscape Maintenance District to refund or abate any of the assessments prior to the completion of all of the improvements. The intent was that once the improvements were made and the maintenance plan and level of service was in place, that the city could not enforce assessments that exceeded the actual costs. But that was after everything was completed. So in this particular case, my preference is to continue with the assessments until all construction is done, we have the levels of service in place, the maintenance plan is in place and implemented, and then reconcile the assessments and if we need to abate or change the assessments after the fact. And Lori was part of this after she got elected too. I don't think you were when we initially started it, but you were part of it for the majority of this. So she can jump in too and let you know if her recollection of the intent is the same. But it was never, the intent was never to do this prior to the completion of construction. So, you know, I can reach out to Elizabeth Fielder, who's the attorney for the developer, since he owns the majority of the lots and is going to pay the majority of this assessment, and see if he has any issues with this. But I just do not abate this.
When I do have, I could just jump in for a second. I do have stacks of written changes and comments proposed in the Land State Maintenance District language from both Supervisor Bonkowski and Supervisor Bagwell. And we all kind of agreed, let's implement it and wait and make sure we don't have further changes. We didn't want to change something and realize that on the implementation side that it would be more difficult. So I do have all of that. I would love to sort of revisit that as well and I appreciate that direction as long as that's legally possible and we can do that. I'm happy with that direction. I just want to make sure that we're compliant with the code that we created.
Well, first, I concur with what Brad said. It never was intended that this was the succinct answer. Everything was an estimate that we started with because I was after, you know, like the number of lots was 108 lots. How many have they actually done? And so then my other question is, I don't know, could we even implement this? Because are we past the deadlines to give to the treasurer to actually even implement the assessment, to put it on the tax roll?
I believe we'd have to act pretty quickly to be able to do that. They would need to know by Monday.
Because my other question really dove into why we were skipping year two and going to year three fee also. I mean, I'm looking for rationale for the overall decision.
Sure. So the financial plan that was written, I'll just tell you, I'm not a big fan of it. I think there's a lot of conflicting language in it and it's confusing, at least from my side, trying to order maintenance and trying to have thoughtful implementation of it. Because it goes about initial year one, two, and three, but if the development, I guess the progress doesn't match up, it doesn't quite fit. So you also have to look at what's completed after one, phase one, phase two, phase three. So the big kicker will be, we'll have the park implemented. So I'm comfortable going with year three. I will say that the maintenance concept that was contemplated from the former Parks Administration is much different than what we're doing now. They were going to use city staff and hire an additional staff person, hire, you know, acquire vehicles and all of the costs, the fuel, everything that goes with maintaining it. Basically, we're subcontracting that service out, which saves us a lot of time and money. We're still having an administrative fee, 10%, because it does take time to manage this, follow up with residents, and still manage that contract. I'm not comfortable going with anything higher than 10%. That would be typical of a grant or any other sort of process. But we're passing on those overhead costs to someone else to do. And to me, that makes a lot more sense for the subdivision and why bring someone on and we have benefits. And I can't justify having one full-time person and benefits out there doing that. They would be doing other things and I don't want the people that live in Schultz Ranch to be paying for other maintenance throughout the city. I don't think that's right. So to contract it out, I think is the cleanest way to go. But that was their intent. So that's where a lot of their numbers came from, is having that in there. Once we get the park built, it's really hard to get quotes off a set of plans. So we need, you know, how often are we going to have the restrooms cleaned? They're going to be available year-round. You know, the winter costs won't be much more than picking up trash, but in the moment that irrigation's on and we have, you know, any vandalism or graffiti or, you know, there's going to be daily service needs out there. So trying to pinpoint those costs, just like Supervisor Bonkowski said, after we're built out and we can really have a good maintenance plan and a level of service plan, those numbers will really flesh out. So basically, if you look at the financial plan and what's completed after the phases, it would match up, you know, really between year three and four. So I think going with year three would be fine. We can try to get a further cost before we assess next year and if the year two costs are more appropriate, we could go with that. But I won't really know. I need to have the park built and get some good hard costs.
Any other board comment? Any public comment on this issue? Okay. Seeing none, I will bring it back.
I think at this time, we probably need to take no action on it. Because the action would be to vote for the, right. So if we take no action, then you're just going to move forward with the regular assessment, correct?
Correct. But I would need some legal advice if we have to do a refund and then reassess or any of those steps.
Yeah, I don't think that you need to.
Where do you see refund?
Well, it's Iris's opinion.
Well, if you read Iris's legal opinion, that's how we came to the cessation. Because if you, I'll read from her legal opinion. So this is, you know, not my words. But so 17.08.09, Section 2C states that the assessment amount is to not exceed the costs incurred by the city in maintaining the property. The first year's assessment amount was based in good faith estimate that was created and the Landscape Maintenance District was approved. That estimate obviously exceeded our actual costs. So if we have to, if we assess, we have to drastically lower the amount or modify that or we can go off the financial plan. But it was a significant amount less than what the assessment was, what our actual costs were incurred because we don't have the park built. We don't have some of those main drainage areas that are going to be part of the majority of the costs for maintenance right now. Additionally, she says the CCMC 17.08.0922C implies that re- Additionally, she says, the CCMC 17.08.0922C implies that refunds of the money already collected would be necessary if we collect an amount that exceeds the expenditures, which is what happened. So there's a couple areas within the code, basically, that infer that. And I get that that's not the intent, but perhaps the language doesn't match the intent properly. So I just want to make sure we're doing the right thing.
Dan, do you have any opinion on this that?
I don't think it said year.
You know, I wish I did. I have, I'm not aware of that legal opinion that came from my colleague. You know, I guess in the context of time right now, I would have a couple of suggestions, either, you know, just a short recess where I could get eyes on that opinion and then maybe try to quickly figure that out for the board. Alternatively, maybe we can just continue that, not for a later date in time, but for maybe, you know, the end of the meeting today, whatever you're more comfortable with. But if I can get just a few minutes and get eyes on that legal opinion, that should buy Iris and then maybe consult with Jen, I'm pretty sure I can come to a legal conclusion that I could offer to this board.
And again, the intent was that we would reconcile revenues and expenses once all construction was complete. Until then, I mean, we have no way of knowing how much costs have gone up. I mean, there's, you know, at this point, we're in the middle of all this, and we really don't have a handle on where we're going with it. I mean, so that was always the intent, was that we would just, we would bank the money as reserves until everything was done, then we could reconcile and adjust it going forward.
Yeah, I was just saying, I think my recollection is it didn't say it was going to be reconciled year by year. If I remember correctly, we didn't do, like you said, year by year.
And just listening to the board's intent, I mean, I don't see any issue with that, you know, policy-wise or in terms of legality, other than I just want to make sure that I cross-reference that with the CCM provisions that were referenced on the record just a second ago, and make sure that we don't run afoul of any of those restrictions that may be in there.
So would it be your preference that we table this to the end of the meeting, such that you have a chance to take a look and then we'll revisit this issue?
I think that would be good. You know, I hate to inconvenience the board, but that'll give me some time to review, you know, the email opinion and then also those CCMC provisions. Thanks.
So we'll table this issue until the end of the meeting. Thank you. Onto Item 13A, to determine that Garden Shop Nursery Landscaping Division is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. So Jen, this is, you know, part two.
Carol Akers, Purchasing and Contracts. This is, yes, to determine that Garden Shop Nursery Landscape Division, Inc., is the lowest responsive bidder pursuant to NRS 338 and to award contract number 1718-218 Centennial Park Playground ADA Improvement Projects to Garden Shop Nursery Landscaping Division, Inc., for a base bid amount of $181,244, plus additive alternative number one for $6,270, additive alternative number two for $1,900, additive alternative number three for $2,000, and a contingency amount of $9,570.70 for a total not-to-exceed amount of $200,984.70 to be funded from the Quality of Life and the Capital Funds Project.
Carol, I think my question, before I open it up to the board, is, was Garden Shop the only bidder? And secondly, what was the engineer, or what was your estimate on this project?
Oh, I don't think I have the estimate. Yeah, I don't think I have the estimate. Jennifer Budge, Parks and Recreation Director. It was very close with the engineer's estimate. I can't remember what it is, but I think it was within $5,000. I will say, just for the benefit of the audience and the board, this is funded from two sources. This is actually from a federal grant and as well as capital improvement project funds. We've had a lot of discussions on playgrounds and making sure that our playgrounds are safe. A lot of them are older. This is actually a newer playground, but it did have safety issues come up when we did a safety audit. So this will resolve those safety issues, and it's also removing the bark mulch that's underneath, putting rubberized surfacing in there, which makes it not only more accessible, but it will not have the mulch blowing out into the ball fields every day and getting caught in the mowers and all of the maintenance issues with how this was designed. So this resolves a lot. I do have experience with the vendor, and they do a great, great job. So I'm very comfortable with them.
Jen, board comment or questions?
I don't think the question of whether this was the only bidder was answered, was it?
Yes.
Oh, you, I didn't, I didn't hear.
Yes, they were. They were the only.
I didn't hear.
I can just tell you that this is a very specialized task, and there are not a lot of people that do this. And they do have a certified playground safety inspector on their team as part of their construction. So there's only a handful of people, and being it's summer, it doesn't surprise me that we only got one bidder for this type of project.
I just wanted to, I didn't hear, so that's all. I just wanted to hear the question answered. Didn't matter to me which way.
Lori?
Mine is just probably a technical, but on the compensation on the contract itself, you'll correct it to the 191,414. Okay, just wanted to put it on the record. Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this issue? All right, seeing none, then I will bring it back to the board.
I move to determine that Garden Shop Nursery Landscaping Division, Inc., is the lowest responsive bidder pursuant to NRS Chapter 338 and to award contract number 1718-218 Centennial Park Playground ADA Improvements Project to Garden Shop Nursery Landscaping Division, Inc., for a base bid amount of $181,244, plus additive alternative number one for $6,270, additive alternative number two for $1,900, additive alternative number three for $2,000, and a contingency amount of $9,570.70 for a total not-to-exceed amount of $200,984.70 to be funded from the Quality of Life and Capital Projects Fund.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you. Good morning. I'm not going to call you what Bob does.
Try not to.
It makes me seem awfully fierce.
Yes, it does. So we're on to Item 14A, to introduce on first reading an ordinance designated as the 2018B Water Refunding Bond Ordinance. So Sherri, are you going to walk us through what this is about?
I am. Actually, I actually have John Peterson here from J&amp;E Consulting and Ryan Henry from Sherman Howard as bond counsel to support. But yes, we're refunding the 2010A bonds. We've been working on this for a couple of years now. So if you have any questions, please let us know.
Board, is there any questions or comment? Any public comment? Well, then seeing none, I will bring it back to the board.
Bill number?
109.
I move to introduce on first reading Bill Number 109, an ordinance designated as the 2018B Water Refunding Bond Ordinance, authorizing the issuance by Carson City of its Carson City, Nevada taxable, tax-exempt, general obligation, limited tax, water refunding bond additionally secured by pledged revenues, Series 2018B, for the purpose of refunding, paying, and discharging certain outstanding bonds of the city, providing for the form, terms, and conditions of the bonds, providing for the levy and collection of annual general ad valorem taxes for the payment of such bond, additionally securing its payment by a pledge of revenues derived from the city, from the water system of the city, and providing other matters related thereto.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Don't bill us.
Lori? Onto Community Development, to adopt a resolution for the transfer of the city's 2018 Private Activity Bond volume cap to the Nevada Rural Housing Authority. Lee?
Good morning. Lee Plamel, Community Development Director. I'll give a brief overview of this item. Also here to help with this item is Bill Brewer at the Nevada Rural Housing Authority, who's requesting that the city allocate or share of this private activity bond to them. This is a program administered through the Nevada Department of Business and Industry. Its money is set aside for tax-exempt loans to fund industrial development and affordable housing. It's kind of an interesting thing that it does, but it's a pool of money that does either one of those. But in Carson City, we have, it's been used over the years occasionally for affordable housing projects, for rehabilitation of apartments in the past. And over recent years, our portion of it that the state allows cities and jurisdictions to allocate has gone to rural Nevada housing program for their affordable housing programs. I think that's a general summary of it. I don't have much more to add to that at this point, but I'd be happy to answer questions. And I think Mr. Brewer can add some more about what they intend to do with these funds.
Good morning. It's a great program. For the record, can you define affordable?
I'll do my best.
All right, thank you.
Bill Brewer, Nevada Rural Housing Authority, for the record. Affordable really depends a lot on the program you're talking about. For most HUD finance programs, affordable would be 30% of a household's income going to housing costs, typically serving folks at 80% or less of area median household income. But that could also mean up to 120% of area median household income for workforce-type housing. So again, it depends a lot on the program that we're talking about. The state will be considering some revised definitions to its code in the upcoming legislative session that will deal with folks who are at 60% or below of area median, people between 60 and 80%, and then folks between 80 and 120%. And affordability would be basically the same at 30% of their household income, but based on programs that are available to those income levels. So hope that gets us.
You did a good job on a really hard question. Board, do you have any comments or questions?
Just a comment too, that Bill, I think a lot of people don't actually understand also that that 30% includes utilities.
Yes, it does.
And I think that that really is what throws it tremendously out of affordability. I mean, so when they're considering your income and 30%, it's to your housing cost, not just the mortgage or the rent. It's also utility. So I just wanted to clarify. That makes it a little more difficult for people.
It definitely does. Thank you. In this current market, it's extremely difficult. And that's what this request would do, is help us fund our mortgage credit certificate program, which assists those families who are at 80% below with a tax credit, an actual tax credit, that enables them to afford a little more house or adds to their disposable income here in the community.
Great, thank you. And any other board questions or comments? Any public comment on this issue? Seeing none? Board?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2018R23, providing for the transfer of Carson City's 2018 Private Activity Bond Cap to the Nevada Rural Housing Authority to finance the costs of single-family residential housing.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Lee.
Okay, Lee, you're up again. To introduce on first reading an ordinance approving a development agreement between Carson City and Schultz Investments, do you want to talk us through this one?
Sure. Again, for the record, Lee Plamel. This is an ordinance to prove a development agreement with the primary, and really the main function of which is to extend the approval of a tentative subdivision map an additional four years. So there, in 2014, a tentative subdivision map was approved on this property off of Clear Creek Road, south of Highway 50 West. It's, it was a tentative subdivision map that created, that will create six lots, each being five acres or more in size. It's single-family, five-acre zoning there with conditions. The tentative subdivision maps per Carson City Municipal Code and NRS are good for four years, in which time an applicant property owner must come in to record the final map after meeting all the conditions and doing the required improvements for the subdivision. The only way to extend it per NRS and the municipal code is by development agreement. So there's a lot of standard verbiage in the proposed development agreement related to standard contract language, but effectively, the agreement is to extend the tentative subdivision map for four years and to keep all of the conditions of approval of the original subdivision map approval, which will be attached to the agreement. To speak a little bit to that and to why we're recommending approval of the four-year addition, I mean, the alternative is to not approve the extension. The tentative map expires, they come in for a new tentative subdivision map. Under a new tentative, no conditions have changed under a new tentative subdivision map. We've talked with engineering and all the conditions of approval, and there's been no change in code. Basically, the conditions of approval today, if we reviewed this new, would be the same as they were four years ago. So we don't feel that there's, anything has changed, that there's a need to let this expire and come back with a new tentative subdivision map. There continue to be questions on the access issues that the property owners are dealing with on Clear Creek Road, which is primary reason, one of the primary reasons needing for the extension. And Sandra McGowan is here representing Schultz Investments LLC. Between the two of us, we're available to answer questions.
Thank you, Lee. I appreciate that. And Sandra, welcome. The question I have, and then I'll turn it over to the board for their questions. Are you actively working through maintenance agreement on Clear Creek Road as well? Because that was one of the other issues, is my understanding, that had to be worked through besides access.
Yes, we have been. For, excuse me, for a number of years, we've been contributing to that, yes.
Adriana, Lee, did we ever find the right language on the indemnification?
I went back and looked all the way to 2011, and the language is the same, which is basically use the same development agreement. So if you wanted to add a word in there so that the sentence makes sense, I can bring you something.
Okay, that would be great. So we're referring to Paragraph 10.1 of the development agreement. The first sentence in that paragraph doesn't make sense. There's some words missing out of it.
It's not a complete sentence.
Right.
It's not a complete sentence, right.
So.
Just one word, so you can like control.
Okay. Okay, so the correction would be, if you look at 10.1 and start in the fifth line, that line would read agreement, comma, whether such operations are controlled by developer or any of developers. So we just add.
Front end to match, right.
So we have that correction on the record. And then there was also, one of the conditions is that the access road be a minimum 20-foot width for fire protection. And our previous fire chief is out here. He's the one that made that recommendation. And I'm just curious, I see Chris Vaughn back there, if the current administration is still on board with the 20-foot width for fire? And he's nodding his head yes, just to be put that on the record. So I'm good.
Any other board questions or comments? Any public comment on this issue? Okay, seeing none, I will bring it back to the board.
I move to introduce on first reading Bill Number 110, an ordinance approving a development agreement between Carson City and Schultz Ranch, or excuse me, Schultz Investments LLC regarding the development of a subdivision known as Schultz Investments tentative subdivision map to extend the approval of the tentative map to August 7, 2022, with the change to Paragraph 10.1 of the development agreement as read into the record.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Lee, you're up yet again. For possible action to adopt a resolution establishing the maximum number of residential building permit allocations under the Growth Management Ordinance.
Thank you. And again, for the record, Lee Plemmell, this is the annual growth management allocations, which let me just, so we gave a presentation, I've given this basic presentation that I have up here to the Board of Supervisors at the Joint Board of Supervisor School Board Meeting. So I'm going to skip the graphs and everything and a lot of that presentation, but I have them here if you have any questions and want to refer back to anything. But this is annually growth management, and you're required to do three things. You establish the number of residential units for building permits in the following year. And the recommendation is for 659, but that's not for 2018. That should be, that should be 2019 in there. Second thing is to allocate amongst those between the developer category, which is defined as subdivisions or developers with 30-plus, 31-plus units, and the general category. And then also to recommend the average daily water usage for commercial and industrial building permits, above which Growth Management Commission approval is required. The recommended, the recommended action from the Planning Commission is 659 residential units in 2019. It was 658 in 28, this year in 2018. The methodology for that is included in there, but it's basically, the base for that is our current population and just a formula that we use consistently to estimate how many units would result in 3% growth. And that the recommendation from the Public Works Department is to maintain the 15,000 gallons a day as the threshold for growth management review. We, you have all the comments from the various city departments and the school district and any other outside agencies are attached. You'll see in the audience, we have representatives, for those that are on vacation, and backups for the representatives that are here to answer any questions. And from the school district, Andrew Fuehlings here, if you have any questions regarding their comments. I'll conclude my presentation with that. I think, you know, historically, it was basically a status quo recommendation of the number of units that are being recommended. As seen on the graph up there, we certainly haven't met, we haven't been up against that threshold in a number of years. What we're hearing from the development community is that we probably won't see us bump up against that in the next year or two, just based on the pace of development, based on other economic factors. What we will see this year, I think, is we have like the larger project like Carson Hills Apartments, which is the 370 units up above the Fandango Casino and next to the, above the theater there, that I think they, their intent is to get building permits by the end of this year so that those 300 allocations would come out of this. How long it takes them to build those units is not clear. They would, they would start on them, but building permits are good for 18 months, so basically a year and a half from when they pull the permits, with the ability to get an extension from the building official. So we likely wouldn't see all of those 300 units in a really very short period of time, but it would be over the next year or two that we would see those. And, but generally speaking, the development community saying they're going to continue at about the pace they are right now, which, as you can see, so far this year, about halfway through the year, this was through May where there was about 100 residential units, most of which were single-family units. There's a little more than that after another month of activity. I don't have the latest numbers yet. I'll be getting those soon and putting them in the report, but that's what we expect to see. So be happy to answer any questions at this point.
Lee, and then I'll turn it over to the board for questions. I want to thank you for your responses. And part of your, the staff's encouragement on the 3% growth is that the labor market kind of controls how this construction happens anyway and at what pace. Do you want to elaborate on that a little bit?
So the question comes up pretty much every year is why, if we aren't up to that, why 3%? We're not really growing at 3% in the long run. It's actually, you know, looking out at the trends, it's closer in the range of 1% plus or minus. And that's kind of what we predict going out in the future, into the future, into the long run. However, I think we have a good basis in the program of using that, for one thing, from a legal and a justifiable standpoint. We have a good basis of using that 3% in the past. So if that's part of it, that's not a great rationale for it. But also, this is not, it isn't an exercise of trying to predict how many will be in the next year, but to decide in any given year what that maximum rate would be, but still maintain adequate levels of service. And we still believe that even in a given year, issuing that many permits will not necessarily meant, will not necessarily result in the long-term growth, being at that higher 3% rate, which probably over the long run, we would have to really factor. I mean, that would certainly then have more impacts on the school district as well as other services that the city provides. But it allows a little economic flexibility in any given year, like a larger, single 300-unit project coming in to be able to give those allocations, whereas if you just reduced it by 2/3, and you actually bumped up against the maximum, you would be, we would be telling somebody that they cannot get a building permit for their property. So I think, you know, that's a really powerful statement to make to somebody. You have to have good justification. So I think it's worked well. And as you said, the economic forces and other constraints have led to actual fairly moderate growth and a little bit more steady pace over the long term.
Thank you, Lee. Brad?
Yeah, I agree with Lee's comments. This is not a prediction of what growth, what we think growth is going to be or what we want growth to be. It's a planning tool that we use to set our level of service so that we can provide an adequate level of services. There's some discussion in our staff report about the pros and cons of changing the methodology, methodology.
Method.
Was it a holiday yesterday?
Yeah.
Method. The number of permits that could possibly, there's discussion about possibly rolling over the excess permits. But that would defeat the whole purpose of this as a planning tool. So if you had 300 permits that rolled over, now all of a sudden, if all the stars align, you know, we'd be looking at potentially 1,000 permits being issued. We don't have the staff or the systems in place to be able to handle that. So I like the methodology that we use right now. I think that it works in good times and bad times. So I would like to see that we continue to use the same method so, you know, so that we can actually use this as a planning tool, which is what its intention is.
Any other board comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, I will bring this back to the board.
All right, record pace here. I move to adopt resolution 2018R24, establishing 659 residential unit allocations for 2018, and establishing 15,000 average gallons per day as a maximum average daily water usage for commercial and industrial building permits. And other allocation distributions is required under the Growth Management Ordinance as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And none opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Lee. All right. If our district attorney is ready, then we'll move back to item 12A. Jen?
Thank you, Jennifer Budge, Parks and Recreation Director. After conferring with the district attorney's office, we can proceed with continuing our assessment. We discussed the amount of the assessment. I was concerned about that. I don't want to overcharge, knowing that we're significantly under. So I'm recommending that we continue, but with that one-year assessment that we're already charging. So no increase right now because they haven't built out even per their financial plan yet. So we can continue to monitor and reassess and look at the LMD language and perhaps come back, you know, in the future with those changes that we've sort of discussed off and on, but as we progress with that. So it doesn't sound like there's any legal concern by having to force the refunds or anything like that. So as long as we're obviously spending the funds on the future phases and those improvements, which we are and we're tracking, just like we would with a grant, we can move forward.
So I'd like to just chime in on that and reiterate. I think that pretty much sums up the conversation we had as a sidebar earlier. The way I read that ordinance, and just to make clear for the record, this is not 17.08, it's 17.18.090 that deals with assessments per CCMC for landscape maintenance districts. The way I read this language specifically where it says that the assessment may not exceed the costs incurred by Carson City in maintaining the property, I read that to be, you know, perhaps less rigid than what was originally anticipated. I think that a fair reading of that could include the entire build-out of all phases and not necessarily just a per annum phase build-out, especially understanding now, and of course, I wasn't here in the city, you know, when this was all being discussed several years ago, understanding the intent behind it as well. Now, of course, you know, it's always sort of a murky, you know, situation we get into if we want to compare and contrast intent between the parties and what was actually, you know, enacted in code. If there's any cleanup that may be necessitated by this, I'm certainly happy to take a look at, and I'll make that recommendation with respect to the assessments ordinance for 1718. But as of today, to answer the board's question, I can read that with a little bit more flexibility. It doesn't have to be as rigid. And I believe that we're legally on justifiable grounds to continue with the assessment and not require a cessation.
Thank you, Dan. I appreciate that. All right. Is there any other board comment?
Or refunds?
Or refunds at this time.
Okay. And do we need to make a motion to authorize keeping the assessments the same as year one? Or do you have the authority, Jen, to do that on your own?
I believe that, you know, I think I glanced at this earlier. I do believe that Jen, as the Parks and Rec Director, would be able to make that call. However, if you want to make it clear on the record, just because this item was submitted, and if you want to just direct Jen, you know, with that motion to continue with the previous assessment amount, I think that would be fine as well.
Lori, is there any other public comment on this issue? Seeing none? Lori?
Okay. I move to authorize the Parks and Rec Director to assess for the Schultz Ranch Maintenance District, the assessment for the upcoming fiscal year at $210.11.
We have a motion? Discussion?
On, so we had assigned resolution number 2018R23 to this, and now we're not using that resolution number. Do we need to adjust the, okay, resolution 24? Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion on this? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. None opposed. Thank you. On to items 16, non-action items, future agenda items, status review, board reports. City manager, anything?
Nothing. Thanks.
Board? I'm just going to say Concert Under the Stars, July 11th. Get your tickets. CarsonCityGreenhouse.org. Seeing none. One more public comment. Then do we have a motion to adjourn? Okay, we are adjourned, and then the board will remain for a non-meeting meeting after everyone clears the room. Thank you.